Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the states is, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Bunton.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
And Ms. Rager.
I need a motion to excuse Commissioner Blash, and I have not heard from Commissioner Rager.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communication reports, including department, quarterly department head reports.
I'm going to be doing several of them. We'll start with folks that we do have here. Maybe we'll start with Jeff Wood from the DTS and surprise him.
During the last quarter, the Public Services Department has taken on many tasks throughout the city, some of which include beginning to survey the streets to update the street construction repair list, while at the same time, we have begun to rate all of the streets in the city utilizing the Pacer or Pavement Surface Evaluation and Rating System. We've held meetings with M.D.O.T. regarding current and future street repair projects, prepared and cleaned up the many special events, including art fair, car cruise, summer magic festival, and fireworks, planted and watered flowers at many locations throughout the city, started and repaired irrigation systems in the downtown parks and parking lots. We have mowed over 150 acres of grass weekly, cleaned, graded, and set up the Ball Diamonds at Memorial Field for rentals as requested, started the street striping program for this year, and replaced traffic signs as needed due to damage or poor reflectivity, trimmed and removed many city trees as requested, trimmed the bushes at all of the city-owned properties, issued 2,183 parking citations, generating approximately $95,000 in meter revenue, and supplied services to over 11,000 persons utilizing the Dial-Ride system.
Any questions?
The 95,000 in tickets, has that been all realized, or are we just...
No, that's, that's not tickets, that's actual meter revenue. That's what's been paid at the meter. Yes.
All right. And that's been collected in the...
Correct.
In the pot.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
City Clerk Lisa Borges.
The City Clerk's office is in the process of recording business registration renewals and mailing second notices to those not received by July 1st. To date, 446 business registration applications have been received and processed. The deadline for filing nominating petitions for the Office of Mayor and City Commission for the November 3, 2015 election is Tuesday, July 21 at 4:00 p.m. Applications for absentee voters' ballot for the November 3 city general election will be mailed to those on the permanent absentee list for the first week of September. If you are not on the permanent absentee list and would like to receive an application, please call the City Clerk's office at 469-6818-OPTION3. As part of the city's door-to-door solicitors ordinance, the City Clerk's office has established a no-knock list. New "no-soliciting" door stickers have been mailed to those residents who are currently on the list. If you would like to be added to the no-knock list, please contact the City Clerk's office. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Residents who would like to volunteer to serve on a board, committee, or commission can contact the City Clerk's office for an application. Currently, there are vacancies on the following boards: Beautification Advisory Committee, Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Cable TV Commission, Harbor Commission, Historical Commission, Historic District Commission, and Traffic Safety Committee.
Any questions? Thank you.
Before I get into the ones that I'm going to cover this week, I'm going to move on to our Utilities Department. As Mayor and Commission know, we recently awarded a management contract to F&amp;V Operations and Resource Management, or FVOP, as they're affectionately known, that has taken responsibility for providing management direction to our Utilities Department. That includes our water treatment plant, our wastewater treatment plant, as well as a collection and distribution system that's in the city of Mount Clemens. So, they've been on the job for two weeks and a day, counting today. Last week, there was a commentary about somebody requesting their presence. They weren't in town to do an introductory thing because I was saving that opportunity for our quarterly reports, which are tonight. So, they were invited tonight, they weren't invited last time. So, they are here this evening. Blair Sealover and Catherine Garnum are here to provide a report on what's happening with our Utilities Department, and they're two weeks and a day on the job here. So, there's been lots, lots of, lots of learning, no doubt, for Blair and for Catherine, so.
An awful lot of learning. Getting used to your systems and everything. I guess first, let me start with, hi, everybody, and thank you for allowing Lisa Vanenberg the opportunity to observe you. There's been a lot of learning, learning your systems and what your protocols and procedures are on our end, learning about your employees, learning about your staff. One of the things that we've just began today, but was slated, was to interview all the staff and find out where the training needs were, where their heads were at with regards to the plant, the facilities. A lot of the stuff, I'd like to hear it come from them versus come from me, or come from Kath. It means a lot more. If I could steer them the right way, that'll help everybody have, I'm trying to bring in a new, new culture and a new era here, and that's, that's important to do that. The list of things that we've done, I just made a real brief list. We've worked on the inventory of the water and the wastewater plants, but pulling down your intero system. There's been a little bit of upgrades going on with that, too. The computer system's been a little behind there. Safety review and audit, we've reviewed several of your safety programs. You do, will receive, tomorrow is the first day of them under our safety training. We do a monthly training throughout our group. Brian's going to do the safety training for the state of Michigan and Indiana for the wastewater plant tomorrow, so. It'll, it'll be good so that he's in front of your guys the first time anyways, they're not just watching it. We'll broadcast it on the internet every time we do these on a monthly basis, and it, it's just a good way to keep track and keep score, and you can prove, and it gives you some, some bit of accountability for what you do with the safety. Other things we've done is, is, like I said, the inventory list for the wastewater system, the water system, transmission system. I did get the list of catch basins, curb stops, water services from, from John this morning. That's being typed up. We'll get it in an Excel sheet, and we'll load it into the maintenance program so that everything will be all on that program. I did find some things with the vehicles today from talking to the guys. How did you used to take care of the vehicles? Well, we used the blue card system. Well, that's a, that's a work order, and away we go. I was glad to hear it. I was really glad. It's, it's not a new concept. That is something that they've had before. We'll go back to it. There's nothing wrong with it. We have done some work on sludge evaluations. I did talk to Watersolve today. I also talked to Reg Zeimer, too, to see what the old system was doing under the conveyor system, if that's an option, and I found out it was. I had to do a little more research on that, so that may be a possibility. As you may or may not know, the, the plant has got a pretty, it's critical, it's a, a critical place with solid handling. Some of that pressure's been relieved, but it's not in a good spot. It's not where we'd like to see the plant. You're not in a sweet spot or a good place for running it from that. Also, done some process evaluation. Kath has been involved with some of the stuff at the water plant. There's been a number of pumps. I know you guys have been approving a lot of the, the equipment as it comes in. I believe there's another one on, on the agenda tonight that, that we put in there for Lane Christensen to do some more work there. Those are all really, really necessary, and you do need to have those done. And then, I guess that's, that's the end of my list for, for right now. That's a quick two-week synopsis. We will have a better report for you probably in a couple weeks or at the end of the month.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
If you have any questions or comments.
I do, and gee. I, we, I have several residents that have given me complaints about water in a certain neighborhood, actually Walnut and Euclid area, and they've just put in some habitat housing in that area, and they were, they're suggesting that there's a reason that their water's tasting bad because of that. What process do we go through? What do we need to do to either get it tested, or have you guys look at it, or whatever?
The first thing I would do is advise them to flush. If it's a new house, or it's a house that's been rehabilitated, is to flush those leaks.
This is an older house, this is the whole, several houses in the neighborhood that's already been established.
It's been established and the service is being used, and we need to just, just go out there and take a look. We'll be happy to if they call. I'll just either send a crew or I'll send one of us. I have no problem. Any, any of my operators are more incapable of doing that, and they'll, might be good to have a fresh set of eyes on it sometimes, you know, in a different perspective. That was another thing we did work on, was trying to come up with some protocols for some of these problems that we have with, we have a sewer that's collapsed, and been collapsed for six months or better. It needs to be addressed, one way or the other.
I hope so.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's hurting your system, and it's hurting their system, and it's a safety hazard, and it's a health hazard, so.
Sure.
And we need to have some protocols for what do we do if the resident doesn't move, and those kinds of things, so.
So I can give you a call tomorrow and let you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. Do you, I'll make sure you get my card, so you got my cellphone.
Commissioner Bunton, you could also just let...
Yeah, just pass it on me.
Pass it on Steve, and he can...
Okay. Sorry, Steve.
It's all right. So, I, I've been appreciative of their efforts. I've had lots of meetings with Blair and, as well as Catherine, a time or two, to hear about how things are going with their early efforts, and as I mentioned before, I'm very excited and optimistic about where we're going to go with the additional resources, expertise, and knowledge that this firm can provide for us. So, it's another outstanding resource for us that we're hoping to really reap a great deal of benefit from. So I look forward to working with Mr. Sealover and Ms. Garnum as well, as well as other people that they bring in at various times as needed. So, I'm very excited about the opportunity that you guys, thanks for coming out. Moving on to the other items that we, I will cover for the fact that we have somebody missing and/or just the realities of situations. In community development, we have a report from Brian Tingley stating a few things. Planning Commission granted site approval, or site plan approval in May for a new 40-unit multifamily condominium development on a vacant North Rose parcel north of Grosbeck between Elwood and Roseview. Engineering of you is completed on a 47,282 square foot building addition for powder coat two and for the county parking deck project. Taco Bell has recently completed construction of its new restaurant on Grosbeck, and S.V.S. Vision has held a grand opening of their new retail facility on Cass. Staff has also completed updates to the city's rental registration and inspection ordinance, and we hope to bring those changes to the commission shortly. The master plan update has begun in earnest with a kickoff meeting with staff in June. A steering committee meeting will be held at the end of July with stakeholder and focus group engagement during late summer. Also, the Train Depot Roof Grant project will begin at the end of July as well, and the city just finished participating in the downtown investor open house hosted in partnership with the Macomb County and the DDA, and I'd just like to say in general on that, it was very well attended. It was a very exciting event. I thought it was a very positive event for the city and for the properties, and just for generally gaining exposure for the community and the availability of investment opportunities for people that want to do business in Mount Clemens. Some second quarter inspection stats, actually, should be third quarter inspection stats, or fourth quarter. Building mechanical, electrical plumbing and zoning permits, 342, 468 code enforcement actions, 329 rental inspections and vacant property certifications, 65 rental certificates of compliance, 12 new certificates of occupancy, and 225 properties cut by our weed contractor. Does anybody have any questions on anything that's covered there?
What is the, sure. What is the, where are we at in hiring the, the new economic developer that's partially funded by the DDA?
We're going to have a meeting with, we have to have a meeting with the, potentially the union involved, which we've discussed, and we're looking to schedule that this week, and then we're going to proceed with that on there. The basic groundwork has been done in terms of job descriptions and developing the language and those kind of things. Now we need to talk some details in terms of coming to an agreement on, on a title change on the planner one, and then where we're going to go with the economic development specialist position.
And how long are you anticipating it to be?
I'm looking to wrap that up within a couple of weeks and get it advertised shortly thereafter.
So, we're going to say by the beginning of September?
For a start date?
Mm-hmm.
That's potentially reasonable, yeah.
Okay.
Might be a little bit earlier than that. It might not be. It depends on whether people need to provide notices and those sort of things.
Okay.
Second report, finance. During the fourth quarter, City Commission reviewed and adopted 2016 fiscal year budget. The Finance Department was obviously very involved in providing several proposed options, which were requested by the City Commission and by myself. The budget was adopted at the June 1 meeting. The fiscal year 2015 fiscal year budget was amended and entered into the system. 2015 property taxes were completed based on the milit rates by the city and other taxing units. That's, property taxes were mailed on June 30, 2015. Preparation for the 2015 audit started in June for all departments. Auditors would be expected to be out in early to mid-August. We've had meetings with city retirees, as well as active employees, to explain new programs and changes to the insurance, health insurance programs, handled several phone calls from post-65 retirees to ask questions, and, and all were sent packages which provided more information for those who could not attend the meeting. Retirees were very happy with the new Medicare Advantage coverage, as they no longer have to pay a 20% copay when they go to the doctors. There are issues still to work out, but overall, it went very smoothly. And as I mentioned, we expect auditors to be out in the early part to mid-part of August. Any questions on finance? Fire Department. 635 runs were, were handled over the three-month period, which averages about seven per day. This information's very consistent with 2014. There were 30 reports of possible structure fires, as well as 26 similar reports of fire in Harrison Township where we provide automatic aid. There were 107 other runs that we would classify as other, which include accident responses, car fires, dumpster fires, gas leaks, elevator rescues, and things of that nature. There were 28 building inspections for fire code violations that were completed, and there were 22 outside training sessions that staff completed during the three-month period as well. Also, that's the information that was provided by the Fire Department. Any questions? Lastly, the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department has a new technology, a new technical system, a new software system they utilize to handle their, their business, so to speak. It's called the New World System. They're still tweaking that system in terms of being able to retrieve data for reporting purposes. We just reached a good point where we had a good set of reports on the old system, and we had a new person in the IT Department at the Sheriff's Department. Unfortunately, the new system has, has complicated things, and they're still working on the details of providing that kind of reporting. So what I can provide is some basic run information, and I'm not going to get into too much detail because I have four pages of detail here, but I'll cover a few items of note. Again, this is for the April 1 through 6/30 time period for the, for the last quarter. Abandoned auto calls were 12, animal bites, four, assault and battery, 47, damage to a patrol vehicle, nine, disorderly conduct, 34, driving with a license that's suspended, 29, harassment, phone call-based harassment calls, numbered nine. The juvenile calls were 15, larceny, 64, malicious destruction of property, 31, eight, operating under the influence of liquor, and in a slightly different wrinkle there, operating under the influence of drugs, we had one, which is something that's been in the news recently about whether that's an issue for something other than liquor, and yes, it is. Robbery, four, traffic complaints, three, trespassing, seven, and traffic stops are listed at 44. So that's some basic numbers for some of the reports that were handled, or some of the runs that were handled by our Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Tim McFadden is here this evening. If anybody had any questions for him. Does anybody have any questions on that report?
Commissioner Mensah?
You didn't even have to look, did you?
No, I saw, I turned the other, I was looking over that when I saw you already.
Mr. McFadden, I believe that these numbers are a decrease from the previous quarter and from the quarter last year, the same quarter last year. Isn't that true?
The numbers will probably reflect a decrease.
Yeah.
However, as far as the reporting goes, this new software system that we have, we're still managing it. So, it, reporting may be down, it may be up. I can't really give you a solid number.
Well, I think, you know, I was looking at the overall crime statistics, 2013 compared to 2014, and in all of the categories, non-assault, assault, non-assault of crime, and, you know, burglaries, larceny, though, all those statistics were down, service calls were up, and as were traffic, traffic stops, all those, those were up. So, that indicates to me that the Sheriff Department is doing a bang-up job in decreasing the crime in our city.
There, there is that trend, and I've noticed that for the last couple of years. Assaults are down, calls for service are up, but assaults are down, property crimes are hovering, maybe down a little. So, and we also had two saves with Narcan. I don't, I don't know if everybody knows what Narcan is, but it's counteracts opiates. So if, if you have somebody who's ODing either on heroin or, or a synthetic opiate, then you spray it up their nose, and within a couple minutes, they come back around, and we've saved two lives with it in the past, probably month.
And I, and I did want to say, you know, my brother's an officer and patrols Mount Clemens infrequently now since he's been moved to another unit, but he did work the fireworks on June 26, and, you know, I badgered him for a verbal report, and I have to say that I am very pleased with the quick interaction of the Sheriff Department in the video that circulated, you know, 100,000 times of the incident that was over on Market at the Marathon Station, and that video clearly showed that within one minute, there was Sheriff Department intervention into that, fisticuffs. So I want to thank you for the proper response on that.
It also helped this year, we, we tried something new. Mr. Brown was, was part of it. We hadn't closed the, the carnival down at 9:30, and it remained closed for the, for the entire night. That helped quite a bit. I think that kind of stemmed the flow of people not returning their cars, or, or, you know, hanging out, loitering. So, we have issues, we're going to have issues. It's fireworks, but I think the issues were down. We had, we did have a sergeant who was assaulted, as you're talking about, one of our sergeants was assaulted, but other than that, it's, the incidences were down from prior years.
Thank you for the great job.
Yes, ma'am, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, that's it for this evening's report.
Adoption of the agenda? Need a motion?
To adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Public participations is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and you adhere to the three-minute rule. So, please come to the mic if you have any.
My name is Loretta Siplin. I'm only known as Loretta. I used to live at 14 Grassard Court. Now I live in Clinton Township due to my house flooding all the time on 14 Grassard Court. On July 3, 2015, Mr. Mississippi, Elijah Siplin, received a property tax form stating that the property tax has increased from 2014 to, from $1,388 to $1,619.28 as of 2015 for the house on 14 Grassard Court in Mount Clemens, which is a property tax increase of $231.28. We have not lived in our house since October of 2013 in Mount Clemens due to basement flooding for over 10 years. I was attending the City Commission's meeting, I have been attending the City Commissioner's meeting since 2012 to get the city of Mount Clemens to fix this flooding problem at the intersection of Grassard Court and Bohemys. The resident, senior citizen, and home buyers care about their streets. They do not want to see unoccupied homes on their street, which create light, lead to crime in the neighborhood, which also affect the city of Mount Clemens. Detroit, an example, is an example of that with so many abandoned homes in Detroit. In the Detroit neighborhood. People do not like going downtown to visit or live in Detroit, which also affects the state of Michigan's growth. The property tax for 2015 will also affect a lot of seniors' income by eating less nutritious food, buying brand-name medicine, which, not able to buy brand-name medicines, which leads to buying generic medicine. And instead of saving money, they just have to save the money to pay their property increase taxes, around $200 for most of them, especially the ones that live in small homes. This year, which affects resident, this year, this affects resident on the north, south of Mount Clemens. The street was affected by flooding problems on the south side of Mount Clemens, which are Kitty, Bain, Clinton, River Drive, Meadow, and Robinson. The north side of Mount Clemens is Howard, Jones, Walnut, and, and the corner of Jones, Bohemys, and Grassard Court, and Euclid. Some of these streets have been, have standing water for two to three days after heavy rainfall in the Macomb area. The city of Mount Clemens received $65 million from a Macomb County official to overhaul the city of Mount Clemens as of 2013. Will this money, the property tax increase of 2015 help with the infrastructure problem like the flooding streets, which cause basements to flood, reduce the value of their home, and pothole roads to be used to fix these problems? The city of Mount Clemens has finished up the infrastructure on Crocker Bridge and, on the bridge and street. When will the infrastructure problem on other streets in Mount Clemens be repaired?
Okay, Loretta, time's up, but we got it. I just want to clarify something. City of Mount Clemens did not receive $65 million, as stated. That $65 million is through a bonding that the county, and the county is doing that, not the city of Mount Clemens, for the buildings. The county received the money for their, the county buildings that they are redoing. The city of Mount Clemens did not receive any money out of that $65 million. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Okay?
The property taxes that we're paying, will that help with the infrastructure problem later down the road?
We can talk about that. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Shelley Emerson, 48, Sheridan. This is Mildred Cobb, 50, Logan. I've got two things for you. First, I didn't have time to print these pictures. The bottom three on the right are 46 Sheridan, your next-door neighbor. The, all the rest of them are Sheridan and Church Street. And Church Street is specifically between Wilson and Ross and Ludwig, is in terrible condition. A lot of large trees did the damage. Their front sidewalk is slanted, because there was a tree there a couple years ago. It's not raked, it's just slanted. Their next-door neighbor ran over his concrete with a backhoe on the weekend, I don't know, five, 10 years ago. Never got caught. So the bottom three on my phone are 46 Sheridan.
Go to the mic.
Sorry. The bottom three on my phone are 46 Sheridan. The city, the blight officer is taking them to court. Their driveway is asphalt, probably 1970 when our three streets got paved. It's asphalt, it has dips where the tires are, it's uneven. But it's their property, it's not, nobody's tripping on it. Their sidewalk, two, two pieces are slanted, and there's one crack, bottom three pictures. All the rest are Sheridan and Church Street, and they're terrible, and there's no groundfall on sidewalks, as far as I know. And they're, you can't ride a bike up Church Street on the north side. Okay, so I don't want you to take 46 Sheridan to court. I want you to work something out with them. The owner, who has sold it three to four times on that contract in 10 years, has not been held responsible for anything, but because it sat vacant for a couple months, they have been inspected and put through the wringer and under the microscope, and I think they've done a lot of good things there, and I don't want them to leave. Okay, Mildred Cobb, the thing I passed out the papers. We don't mean to be insulting or threatening, but she's 76 years old. Her husband's family has owned her house since 1925 or '30. She has an apartment or apartment complex to the south, right next door. It doesn't go past her property, her house. The gentleman spending all the money that could buy a small country at 35 Grosbeck has a block wall this high blocking the north side, where apparently there will be dumpsters. On both corners, Aunt Logan, that wall is about 10 feet from the curb. It is extremely sticking out. She doesn't deserve that. That wall should come down. He's been playing with this thing for five years. He can afford to take that wall down, put the dumpsters in the middle of the property, put a wrought iron fence, and Mount Clemens is going to see it, because everybody passing us gets to see Myers, George Doris Park, and this guy's beautiful little fountain fire pit. He's done a lot of work. I don't know why he did that. It went from middle class to Section 8 to some creation he's got going on. She doesn't deserve those walls. She doesn't deserve those walls. The gentleman, Mr. Brown, gave it to Community Development, they're looking into it, but we want the wall down. We want wrought iron fence, and we don't want it 10 feet to the curb. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are you phone? Yeah.
You get that?
No, 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 we don't want it. Anyone else? Okay. Got to be quick.
I know. Hrithi Stevens, 69 Bain, speaking on behalf of 95 Inches. I'd just like to commend Brian for the hard work that he put in in the last three months, three and a half months, trying to solidify the deal with the property for Mrs. Bullock. And, you know, he worked really hard, and we negotiated, you know, hard negotiators and whatever, but it worked out for the betterment of the city and as well as her. So it was a win-win for everybody. Thanks for the hard work on everybody's behalf.
Thank you.
Laura Kraut, 15 Bellevue. I attended the Planning Commission meeting two weeks ago, and it was asked at the Planning Commission meeting what was happening with the property that was the former laundromat on Cass, just east of, I'm sorry, just west of the high school.
Miller?
Yes, at Miller and Cass, yes. And they said that, oh, well, they're doing some preliminary things, and nothing had been pulled in terms of permits, and there really wasn't any use issues at that point. Two days later, I was driving down Cass, and an entire exterior wall was down. So in my definition, that's not a few preliminary things. So I was just wondering if that has been now changed in the status of two days from the Planning Commission meeting? If so, what's going there, and what's happening, and what type of structure is going to be fixed? I mean, I'm all for progress, but it would be nice to know what the plan was. My other point was, I've been doing a lot of petition signing and talking to a lot of residents, and in that, it was during the time of when the tax bills came out. So of course, that's a coincidence, but also just was able to get a lot of feedback. And I had been talking to a few very longtime residents of Mount Clemens, went to high school here, were raised here, raised their families here, and now are looking to put their houses on the market. And so I was really very disturbed by that, and was really sad to hear that. And so I know that that was a very tough decision, but I think there are some serious repercussions to that, and so I hope that maybe we can look at the next year's budget and maybe reconsider.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I don't know where to start, I got a couple of items. I'll go back to where, I'm just not surprised everybody's got sticker shock with their tax bills. Wow, what a shocker. What'd I tell you? What'd I say? Oh, don't remember. Well, I'm one that Laura's mentioning, and I intend is to move within ear. I'm not paying more for the pleasure of living in a hellhole than I have a truck terminal out back, a cabinet shop out back, an auto detailing company out back to the west, traffic on Cass, and that's just some of it. And then, when you have a perfectly good and sane way of financing your needs, you don't do it. City income tax, folks, I know that everybody sitting here is going to have more out of their pocket if there's a city income tax than they will as a property tax increase. I know that. I know that's why it's going to be hard to get, but you're not supposed to be sitting here voting your personal interest. You're supposed to be sitting here voting what's good for the city. And what's good for the city is to have a good chunk of that $33.6 million county payroll, which is the first thing you pick up. You need a city income tax, and the city aid will help you with it, collecting it, setting it up. Buy yourself some time to get the best, forget all this other stuff, the investors, those aren't investors. It's a joke. Down at the party store, the man didn't buy to develop, he bought to wait. Buy low, sell high. It's the same thing I've heard for years and years and years and years. And while we're talking about it, I noticed a health wanted ad in the paper for a finance director. Are we letting DeLuigi just walk away and retire nicely, or are we going to whack her about what they tried to pull? You know, if I hadn't said something about that proposed salary, you know why she called him proposed? So if somebody caught her, she could say, oh, they're just proposed. And if nobody caught her, those races would have gone through. And never forget that the legacy costs, being the pension, are based on the last salary. Boy, wouldn't that have been nice for that one guy, what, 12, 13% increase, or 23%? I don't know, some obscene figure. And I hope that once she's gone, we'll be getting at least a good audit, if not a forensic audit. Because I've seen several things come out of that department over the years that are very questionable. And that's why I've never really believed that we have financial trouble. You've had inadequate personnel there. And the outside accounting firm, they're the ones that remember when somebody went, they were auditing closely, somebody went to jail, and went to plant and rant, saying, we didn't do anything wrong, we failed to do something right.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised previous meeting.
Several items this evening, and some of them had already been covered, so I'll kind of gloss over those. Sidewalk information, it was asked at a prior meeting what the sidewalk plan was and whether it was moving forward. A sidewalk plan was discussed recently with city administration and ultimately funded in our fiscal year 2015-2016 budget at a figure of $50,000. The plan will roll out in the current fiscal year as budgeted and as planned. City staff has begun finalizing administrative details, and work is anticipated to begin this summer on that program. Purchasing collaboration, in terms of potential collaboration with the county or other public entities or procurements, this is handled on a case-by-case basis. The status and age of existing procurements by other entities, whether piggybacking or borrowing of their contractual arrangements is allowed by the agency and/or the vendor. The timing of an entity's own plans and the entity's procurement processes and requirements are examples of some of the variables that are involved when we look at these opportunities. City administration has brought this subject up at relevant meetings such as those held with Macomb area communities for regional opportunities or macro. We will continue to follow up in this fashion to find, develop, and utilize these kinds of opportunities. I did a subsequent email to Mayor and Commission about some information related to how we do handle collaboration of procurements. There's examples of buying vehicles through Macomb County. There's examples of participating with Macomb County on a variety of basic needs, cleaning items, things of that nature on a monthly and yearly basis. There's the MyDeal program, which is a state-level program that puts out contracts for purchasing of various items and goods. And the city does look on MyDeal for purchasing opportunities that make sense when we have needs that coincide with what they have contracts for on the MyDeal site. So there's a variety of things that we do and continue to do to stretch the dollars that are provided to us by residents and businesses as far as they can go, and make sure that we are being good stewards of the cash and resources that are provided to us as a public entity. So there's a variety of things that we do. The third item was F&amp;B Operations and Resource Management. We already had some coverage by them this evening. The only other thing I'll retouch on is the fact that they weren't here at the prior meeting because I did not invite them at that meeting, I invited them to this meeting. The tent at North River Road was also brought up at the prior meeting. This tent was a permitted use. In fact, the event is a part of, has been held annually in Mount Clemens since before 2010. While city administration is not aware of specific complaints on the event from residents and others, we did notice activity that was not part of the permit that was pulled for the event, and that activity was addressed with the people that were holding the event. The site has been nearly cleared, and we will follow up as needed to make sure the event is permitted and conducted properly in the future as needed, just as we did in this year, 2015. Residents' concerns on the sewer system, Ms. Siplin was here at the prior meeting, and she was here this evening to talk about those things. The mayor addressed some of the information, but I'll cover a couple of other different things that I've talked about in the past as well. The city will potentially receive funding in the future to help us better evaluate our systems. Specifically, one of the priorities that we've made is our collection and distribution system, which is what's impacted the homes in the areas that Ms. Siplin talked about. There are situations where combined sewers exist in those areas which create additional demands on the system when storm events are happening, and separating those sewers would lessen those issues. Those are multimillion-dollar problems typically, multi-hundred-thousand-dollar problems depending on the neighborhood and the size of the issues. So we are looking to get a saw grant that's potentially going to come online in 2016 that will allow us to get a better handle on where we have those kinds of issues. And then, once we have that information, we're going to be able to address comprehensively what kind of issues we have in the city and move forward. And speaking directly to the question about whether the new funding available through the charter amendment can impact that, yes, indeed, that can have an impact on that. We have started to allocate in 2016 for capital needs, and we will continue to do so in the future. And as I mentioned, these are multi-hundred-thousand-dollar problems or million-dollar problems, and we're not going to have enough revenue to address everything, but we want to come up with an understanding of our system and address the biggest problems first with the limited funding that we will have available. The last thing that I was going to clarify is the investment made by the county, as the mayor mentioned a little bit earlier. Those dollars at $65 million is not something that was made available to the city. It's a project that's being done by the county on county facilities. And point of fact, they're not spending $65 million tomorrow either. It's a bonding program where they're going to spend monies over a period of time, over the next several years, to invest in the buildings and the facilities that they operate in the city of Mount Clemens. So that's a good thing for the city, having better facilities, potentially bringing more employees downtown is a potential benefit for the city as well and for the businesses downtown. Unfortunately, since the county's tax exempt those increases in the value of those properties isn't even going to impact our revenue stream, so we won't receive even the cursory benefit that we would get from an increase in the valuations of the properties. Having said that, it's a welcome investment by the county in the city, it's just not something that's going to provide additional resources to the city of Mount Clemens to do things that we need to do. Next item, garbage collection issues. There was a resident with a concern about early placement of garbage at the curb for collection, and we provided information about contacting the DPS at 586-469-6847. This number is appropriate for during the workday as well as for after-hours and on weekends, which was a question that Commissioner Campbell had, because the resident can leave a message. Basically, when we have these kinds of situations where somebody might put curb garbage out at the curb early, we follow a program of how we notify them. After the initial call, DPS will drop off a notice to the address. This notice will cover the rules and guidelines for proper handling of garbage and placement at the curb, and there will be a notice that the resident should contact the DPS. Next steps depend on the resident's response or lack of a response. If the resident contacts, the DPS is instructed. The resident will have a verbal explanation of the rules and guidelines, how they are violating the rules, and how the DPS will collect their garbage in the future if the violation persists, and how the resident will be billed for expenses relating to the pickup of that garbage, which would include overtime costs for city staff. If the resident does not contact the DPS, the DPS will mail a violation notice referencing the rules of violation, and the next step being collection again of the garbage by the DPS with costs being imposed on the homeowner after the collection is effected. If that addresses, again, the subject of the complaint, the DPS will then take the step of collecting garbage and developing a bill and billing the property owner for the costs. Again, the goal of this process is compliance, it's not punitive, it's compliance. That's why there's multiple warning opportunities for residents so that they can have the opportunity to understand what the issue is and handle their garbage in an appropriate way in the future so we can avoid having a situation where we have to collect it at the curb and charge them. And that's the only several items, I guess, I had for administrative responses this week. If there's any questions.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Mansour?
City Manager Brown, in the community development statistics, do you happen to remember offhand, or can you grab them? How many CFOs did the city of Mount Clemens issue in the last quarter?
Certificates of occupancy for the three-month period was 12.
Okay. I just wanted to remind people that with the certificate of occupancy for a new home, the sidewalks are inspected, and if there are cracks and things that need to be, you know, fixed, heaving or elevation, that is done prior to, I believe, getting a final certificate of occupancy. So it may sound like a passive program, but with those 12 homes, all of the sidewalks around those 12 homes were inspected and fixed if they needed to be.
Correct.
All right, I need a motion to approve minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes of the July 6th meeting.
Support.
Roll call. Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
General Business, 98. Approve purchase and payments of invoices. I need a motion.
Move to approve purchases and payments of invoices?
Second. Any questions or comments?
I did hit with questions. There was, on here, there was a charge for water meters, and I'm not objecting or anything, I just want to know where we are with replacing water meters in the city.
I don't have a good number for you. I know that this was the allocation for the year for the work that we were going to do this year in terms of replacing the meters, the plan of attack that we had to address this year. I would have to get back to you in terms of a percentage or anything like that, I don't have a good set of information on that, I apologize.
Okay. I was just curious. And do we still have another firm that's placing those in houses, or are our own?
Right, we do have a firm, SLC, that is handling the installation.
Okay.
Right. And they should be, just the usual routine, they should have some documentation on them, they should have identification on them, identifying them as a contractor for the city, so if anybody's concerned about those kinds of things, and that's something that I can provide a more detailed report on. We've kind of covered it, if my memory serves in a prior report, but we can go over that again in case it becomes an issue, because it's good to have a reminder on that subject. But they should have identification, you should receive a letter from the Utilities Department ahead of time that work is going to be done in your neighborhood, so you should have some notice on a couple of different fronts that somebody's going to come up to handle that meter installation for your address.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please. Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
City Managers Report.
Just a couple items on the City Manager Report. Redevelopment-ready community certification. The city's been evaluating the RRC program requirements and determining how many communities are involved in the program. We've learned that there are three certified by the state, and 31 are participating actively. As those that are historians on that might recall, it used to be a program underneath the Michigan Suburbs Alliance, and then it was changed off to the state of Michigan. So those numbers that reflect three certifications, that's just since it's become a state program. So there's 31 actively participating communities. We've recently held a meeting with Michigan Economic Development Corporation staff to go over the processes in greater detail, and this additional research has served to make us even more interested in pursuing certifications, like Brian Tingley and I. Didn't learn anything that scared us off and learned many things that made us more attracted to the program. So we have proactively and purposely included a few items in the master plan update, which will meet requirements we were missing for the certification when we initially developed an interest in the program. Brian researched what would be required, what kind of things would be missing from our tool belt that we would need, and this master plan update is going to tick off several items that are required for the RRC program. So we're excited about getting ourselves into a better position for that program. And in fact, the partner that we have with the master plan update is LSL Planning, and they've been very involved with the state in developing the requirements and the actual program guidelines for the RRC program. So I think we're well-positioned in a variety of ways to start off with a good position to go forward with redevelopment-ready certification. We are looking to undertake that process soon, and we plan to bring a, what's called a resolution of intent to the Mayor and Commission in the next meeting or two, potentially as early as August 3rd. And at that point in time, we could also have a presentation, a kickoff presentation by state representatives, depending on their availability, and that's where we might manage it for August 3rd or the later meeting on August 17th. The resolution of intent is basically just what it describes, it's going to say that we're interested in joining the program, we're committed to meeting the requirements of the program, and moving forward and achieving redevelopment-ready community certification. So look for something in the future on that. Roadwork, Crocker and Market, the wrap-up work on Crocker Street Mill and Cap Project continues. I combined a couple of words there, I apologize. The previously mentioned final punch list includes application of a second coat of paint to the street markings, which is a requirement, the asphalt sucks up a lot of the paint, you have to allow a period of time of about 30 days, they come back out and do a second set of coat, a second paint coat on those. paint to the street markings, which is a requirement, the asphalt sucks up a lot of the paint, you have to allow a period of time of about 30 days, they come back out and do a second set of coat, a second paint coat on those markings on the road to solidify them and make sure they're easily visible for people using the road. So that punch list item is going to really push the timing of it back, but other than that, the punch list is mostly accomplished. That street marking should be completed and closed out by the end of July. The Market Street project should begin by the end of July as well. We have forwarded the signed contract to the state, and next steps include the formal contract award by the state to the contractor. And after the project award, we'll schedule another pre-construction meeting with the contractor and our engineer and formally kick off the project and update you on specific dates as they are determined later on after that meeting. Those are the two items that I had for tonight's city manager report.
Questions, comments?
It's nice to have the Crocker work done, it looks beautiful.
It does.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Bunton, how was vacation?
It was wonderful.
I'll rub it in.
But anyway, we're all back now and everything is happy. I got my tax bill, just like everybody else got theirs, and yeah, it hurt. But I tell you what, I would rather have this tax bill hurt me now than have an emergency financial manager come in and do some things that I have no control over and cut and slice until we are at a bone, and they get to walk away and we get to suffer from their activities. So yes, I'm not happy, I told you before, I do not like paying taxes, especially the increases that we had, but I like a whole lot less the fact that somebody else can come in and tell me what to do with my house. I'd like to encourage the homeowners and lawn maintenance crews to not blow or sweep the grass clippings and yard waste into the streets. It gets into the sewer systems and helps to back up the water flow through the system. Please bag your yard waste or compost it and protect our aged sewer system. I think this is something that if you drive down any of the streets, you'll see grass on the sidewalk or in the street itself, and what happens is, it rains, it gets washed into the sewer system, and it can be a problem. When we have an aging sewer system, we need to be more cognizant of protecting it until it can be repaired. On behalf of the Mount Clemens Community Coalition, the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, and the Mount Clemens Community Schools, I would like to invite the parents and students of Mount Clemens students and community to sign up for and attend the Makers Fair Detroit event. This will be taking place at the Henry Ford in Dearborn, Michigan, this coming Saturday, July 25. It will feature technology, science, arts, crafts, engineering, food, and IMAX experience. Part of your admission has already been paid for by outside contributions. Transportation will be provided, and if you're interested, please call Mount Clemens School System for further details. But this is a wonderful opportunity and they have so many very interesting things going on there that could spark your desire to go into a professional field after viewing some of the wonderful things that they will present at this event. And with that, we'll go to Commissioner Wisdom. The best way to win an argument is to begin by being right. That's by Jill Rupp Hoss. With that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Mansour?
I wanted to remind residents that the free, the word "free," spay and neuter program is still in place until November 15. If you have a dog that, or a cat that you need to have neutered or spayed, please call All About Animals, call 586-879-1745. If you didn't get that number, call the Macomb County Animal Shelter and they can give you that. But that program, only Genove goes until November and it is grant-funded, so the more people that do that, the better it is and the better opportunity we have for a grant again next year. And I wanted to remind people that the Macomb County Community Services Agency has for seniors over the age of 60 and over, Project Fresh coupons, where you can get these coupon books and take them up to the Mount Clemens Farmer's Market and get free fresh food. I think there's 10 coupons at $2 apiece, so you'll get $20 worth of free vegetables. You can contact the Office of Senior Services over at the Verkullian Building on Dunham Road, or you can just give them a call at 469-5228. And that's all I have tonight.
Just to piggyback on that, Senior Services was at the Farmer's Market this weekend, and they had lots and lots of people signed up, the line was all the way around, and I think they are setting up again at the Farmer's Market to pass out those coupons. So come and get them because it's a great deal to get the free fruits and vegetables.
Commissioner Hill.
I hope everyone received and read the city's newsletter, The Clement Times, which arrived last week with the Journal. There were some very informative articles, and if we all follow the advice in them, it will help us all enjoy the summer and the beginning of fall. There's also information about activities in the downtown, the school district, the Crocker House Museum, and the Anton Art Center. So there was a lot of information in that newsletter. Last week, I was pleased to have the opportunity to speak to two groups at the First United Methodist Church last Thursday and bring them up to date on city commission activities for about the last year and a half or so. And when I reviewed all that we have done, it's no wonder I'm tired. We have dealt with a lot of issues, had a lot of extra meetings, and have been very And then, lastly, if Gary Blash happens to watch the meeting, I hope that he is feeling better and will be back soon. And to everyone else, stay cool in this hot weather, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, just two quick things here regarding the pictures that were brought in with regards to the wall and to the other resident regarding the basement problems. If the city manager could keep us informed as to what the progress is regarding these two issues, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know again, Mount Clemens was named Tree City USA for 2014, so we're all proud of our program and our trees, and I want to thank Jeff Wood and the commission that he has. Keep up the good work. And the Beautification Commission, I know they're all involved. A while back, I was asked, perhaps the mayor can give a quarterly report on what the mayor does. And so I thought today was a good opportunity because everybody else is giving their quarterly reports. So I went and put my quarterly report together. So I will present it now. I have represented the city at the following meetings. The macro meeting in center line, Sandra Levin's Ninth Congressional District Mayors and City Managers Meeting in Royal Oak, Mount Clemens Retirement Board Meeting, Two Macomb Children Hands-on Museum Board Meetings, Two Macomb Historical Board Meetings, Base Community Council, the Regional Transit Authority of Southeastern Michigan Meeting in East Point, Project Macomb Steering Committee, which was hosted by Judge Davis and the Family Against Narcotics, Army Grassroots Advisory Board Meeting in Detroit, 41B Court Financial Management, the Downtown Development Meeting, and the Mount Clemens Coalition for Youth and Families. The following events I attended, which I had been asked to speak at on behalf of the city, the Mount Clemens Lions 80th Celebration, SVS Vision Ribbon Cutting Celebration, Exalta GM Supplier of the Year Award Celebration, McLaren Hospital Volunteer Guild Celebration, Rick Channard from Krosnick Carpets, he received a piece of the World Trade Center's steel for his generous support for the Foundation's Building of America's Bravest Program from the Stevens Still Tunnel and Tower Foundation. And they actually sent someone out from Washington, from New York, from the Foundation of Firefighter, and this is in memory of Stevens Stiller. So he was presented that, and I think it was a great honor for him to receive that, and he, of course, runs Krosnick Carpets in Mount Clemens. The Investors Open House. I also attended Macomb Health and Fitness Luncheon, Seminole Hills Fourth of July Parade, the Library Celebration, 150th Celebration this past weekend, and the Salvation Army Volunteer Dinner. I have performed three weddings, and all of those were held on Saturdays. I met with Father Cooney and I presented him with a proclamation for his years of service to the priesthood. And I'm in the office, a minimum of three days per week, usually more, meeting with residents, stakeholders, responding to emails and phone calls. And that doesn't include the meetings I attend here and the workshops and other meetings that Commissioner Hill mentioned. So I thought I would just share that with you tonight, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
What do you do in your spare time?
I go to the Farmer's Market, I eat downtown, I go home, I work in my garden. But...
Doesn't sound like you would have much spare time.
So that is my report for this evening. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Rockoff.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mansour.